All right. I'm sorry to say that two of the candidates in this district are not going to show up for this panel. So Representative Peterson suggested pretty early on in the process that he wasn't going to be able to fit it in. And he's he received an invitation, but I'm sorry to say that he seems not to have found the time for this. And I learned about 40 minutes ago that Letitia Sharp had a conflict, a personal matter came up, and that she also is not going to be able to be here. However, I think it's important to proceed nonetheless to allow Commissioner Hodge to give us the benefit of his views on a range of subjects, and also to give you, the members of the audience, a chance to ask questions. I know in the Legal and Voters Panel, which I saw, there is not a chance for questions. And I think that kind of contact with the public is important. This meeting is being recorded, and we posted on the WCDP website something by next week. And I hope that it will attract a larger audience then. So I'd like to start by giving Commissioner Hodge two or three minutes, as you wish, to introduce himself and to explain why he's running for this office, what he hopes to accomplish. Commissioner Hodge?
Well, thank you, and good evening, everybody. I want to thank the WCDP for holding the forum and helping to bring attention to the work that the county government does. Most people tend not to be too familiar with our work. So anytime I have an opportunity to talk about county government, I'd love to take it. I'm a lifelong Michigander, a licensed master social worker, and a professor of social work at University of Michigan, where I teach graduate level policy courses. I've committed my entire career to public service and improving the lives of others. I first ran for county commissioner because I believe that everyone across our county should have the opportunity to be healthy and build wealth and to be safe. And I'm running for reelection to continue making progress on improving the health of our residents, disrupting generational poverty, promoting racial equity, and combating gun violence. The challenges we face require a forward looking progressive vision for Ypsilanti and Augusta townships, as well as the county as a whole. And that's the kind of leadership I provided during my first term, and it's what I will continue to provide if I'm reelected. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to answering all the questions you have for me and the questions that the audience might have.
Thank you so much. I did actually prepare a few questions and a little research. And I'm then going to open the floor to questions from the audience. So I'd first like to ask about the creation of a new youth center in the district. I understand this has been discussed on a number of occasions by the Board of Commissioners. And there's and and it has not kind of the project has not begun in part because there are differences about key questions such as where it should be located, exactly what services it should provide, and maybe there are other issues as well. And so I'd like to know what your views are about where the best location is, what services it should provide, and why, how can it actually come into being? What what needs to happen to make this happen?
Yep. So to be clear, you're referring to a recreation center and not a youth assessment center?
That's correct.
Okay, I can also talk about a youth assessment center later, too. You know, I am strongly in support of us having a recreation center in the eastern part of the county. I know this has been a conversation that local governments in the county and other partners in the community have been having for the better part of a decade. I believe that we are in a space now where we will get commitments to complete or start moving forward on this project by the end of the year. We have looked at a number of different properties. There was space allocated by Ypsilanti Township that they are no longer going to contribute, which personally is fine with me because I think there are other locations that would better serve the residents that would best best use that space. When I think about the kinds of supports and services that would be provided there, I'm thinking about wraparound services, after school programming, childcare, a wide variety of services that are currently lacking in the communities that would really benefit from that, thinking specifically about the 48197 and 48198 zip codes. So I tell you, we're at a space right now where the county is evaluating about five different properties, county owned properties and non county owned properties. And I think we're narrowing it down on two different locations. And I think you can expect to see more news on that within the next month or two.
But two different locations, that that sounds like the there's actually movement so that there'll be decision made by the Board of Commissioners.
There is significant progress on this. I've been involved with this since I took office and continuing to be involved with it. And I can say, I'm pretty confident that we're finally making significant progress. The Board of Commissioners is going to allocate funding, I would expect. We will vote on it. I will vote yes to allocate funding. I expect that we're going to receive federal funds. There is already a federal earmark that we received as part of this. So I it's gonna it's one of my top priorities, making sure that it happens, that along with expanding the number of community centers we have across the county, in particular, in the eastern part of the county.
I have to confess, I don't I don't know the story about the assessment center. Could you explain what that is?
Yeah. Yep. So that's a more community mental health focused discussion. There have there are some communities that have what's called a youth assessment center, or it can go by other names. But generally, it's a hub for services to provide whatever services youth may need to divert them from engagement with the criminal legal system. So the county has been having conversations about that for the last several years. And I was in a meeting this week about us moving forward on that and figuring out one location, where is that going to be? And then what services and support should be provided? It's not best to talk about it as a youth assessment center, because it does more than assess needs. You could think of it more as like a community hub for services. And that's really the direction I'd like for us to continue moving in in terms of how we go about providing services, getting them all in a central location that's easily accessible for people, or making sure that we're able to deliver services in a mobile fashion. You've probably heard me talk about before or seen it in action. Our Health Department has a mobile clinic that we've used to distribute PPE and to do vaccinations. We committed funding to be able to expand the work that comes out of that mobile clinic, because we could use it for other Health Department services, just as an example, like sexual health services and wig services. So I really would like to see us continue moving in this direction where we bring services directly to people, meeting them where they're at, and having models where we have a lot of services located in central locations that are easy for people to get to.
Thank you. I'd like to now turn to a question that you've been asked before in this campaign, but just to get more specifics, and that is about what the Board of Commissioners can do, if anything, about the high cost of housing, in particular, in District Five. And not not all members of the public may understand that the Board of Commissioners powers here are limited, that Board Commissioners doesn't do the zoning. And so the question is, what what really can you do?
It's a good question. And I'm glad you bring point out the zoning piece, because that is a challenge. It's one of the powers that I wish we had, but we don't. But what I understand to be correct is that if the county owns a property, it's not subject to local zoning. And because of that, I think we can get really creative with thinking about properties to purchase, and that would be county owned, and then to use those to expand affordable housing opportunities. But I want us to also be encouraging home ownership. We will be likely voting as part of our next Washout Rescue Plan package on the creation of a financial equity center. And I expect that a component of that would include down payment assistance for people. So in thinking about how do we change people's life trajectories and disrupt generational poverty, a lot of that is around homeownership. So I wanted to see I wanted to see us do that. We also need to increase the supply of housing units. That is largely part of the challenge that we're facing is there's just not enough supply. We could be really creative, like with supporting community organizations and developing community land trusts. That's an idea that I'm really in favor of, particularly in communities like mine in Sugarbrook and West Willow, where we see a really high population of renters. And I'm sure many of those renters would love to own their own home, but what you have is a lot of landlords that don't take care of the properties well, don't live in the community, and many of them live out of state. What a community land trust would be is that now we could form a nonprofit, and the nonprofit would own those properties. And what they would do is keep ownership of the land, and this nonprofit would be community driven. So you could think of a board of directors that's made up of residents of a neighborhood. And then they would sell the home, and then they would sell the home to a low income family. The low income family could live in the home. And if they decided they wanted to move out of that neighborhood at some point, they could sell the home to another low income family. There'd be stipulations around how that would work. But it would be a great tool to build generational wealth for people. And by having the community land trust continue to own the land, that stays in ownership of the community. So you never come into this situation where you have a bunch of landlords that are not invested in the community purchasing a bunch of parcels.
What exactly is the role of the Board of Commissioners in that?
It's a good question, right? Because we're not going to the Board of Commissioners is very unlikely to create a community land trust. But what we could do is support a nonprofit or a community organization that would like to consider doing that. To give you an example, when we look at different neighborhoods in Ypsilanti Township, West Willow has a new West Willow Neighborhood Association. So they that neighborhood created its own nonprofit that supports the residents. I mean, they have they have a building where there are tools for residents to lend and a bunch of other resources that are in the West Willow area. And they're able to have that because they created a nonprofit. So I would be supportive of the Board of Commissioners, looking at how do we financially support that? And then how do we set up the infrastructure to make sure that groups that are interested in doing this have the technical support to be able to to develop a community land trust?
So it might be a matter of providing some staff time from the county government to help educate and and just provide perhaps some legal support to groups that are interested in doing this kind of thing?
Yeah, and I'd be supportive of that, because I see this as one of the tools that we have to really advance, you know, housing access and to help people be able to build wealth. I mean, there are a lot of limitations. Like you said, we don't control zoning. And then there are several things at the state level that need to change, that the state keeps us from doing rent control. They keep us from doing inclusionary zoning. So those if the state would change those things, we'd have many more tools in our tool belt to be able to impact people and expand affordable housing. But until that happens, we have to rely on, I think, really creative solutions like that.
Thank you. Now, I have a number more other questions, but I'd like to ask members of the audience if they have questions. I don't want to monopolize you, Professor George Hodge. So if anyone in the audience would like to ask a question, if you would please raise your hand, and I will unmute you, you can pose a question. Um, okay, this is you just identified as Sam. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This I was late. The one campaign was calling me, and the woman refused to say whether she belonged to a union. But um, is no other the two other people who put their name on the ballot aren't here?
That's correct. I'm I'm very sorry. We tried, that's all I can tell you.
Well, thank you. You said me, Sam, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Huck. Thank you, Commissioner Hodge, and thank you, Mr. Nathans, for being here. I appreciate it. No question. That was my only question for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Call on Robbie Moore. Unmute you? Yes, you may speak.
Yes, I'd like to know, what can you what can a person do? Being victimized by a government official? That's still running for government government seat? Because I've been trying to get help, and nobody wants to seem to help me to prosecute Ronnie Peterson.
Well.
I can try and answer that one. I would say that, you know, elected officials are subject to the same laws as everyone else. I, you know, I know that you have been very open about your story, and you've reached out to law enforcement before. I'm not law enforcement.
Even a attorney, Michigan Attorney General. But I see that he she's endorsed by Ronnie Peterson.
Yeah, you know, I can't really answer what should happen at that point or with that specific challenge. I don't know if Eli has any any thoughts on that part of it. I mean, I think that, you know, contacting, you know, legal counsel.
I mean, it's been very difficult to, you know, my mom passing and then dealing with this, because she was my support. And he literally took my childhood from me.
I wish that Representative Peterson himself were here to respond. That I can't, you know, we can't pretend to respond for him. And I can't pretend to respond for law enforcement officials. I don't I don't know kind of what what you've told them, what you've given them.
I gave them every single thing. I remember every single thing what he did. I got paper trail. I got surgery that tells it all.
Well, all I could the county prosecutor is Ellie Savitt.
Yeah, but my opinion is also too with Robin McQuaid. They're supposed to be advocates for these type of people, you know, and she was the lawyer that sent me a piece of paper for disshaming and defaming him, me being a victim. And he literally disclaimed and victimized, I mean, disclaimed and defamed as also when he got prosecuted back in 2010, 2011. That's not that many years ago. He should be on the registry.
Well, I thank you for bringing up this issue. I really I think at this point, we don't have too much more to say. As as Commissioner Hodge said, his job is not prosecution. So he he might you could approach him, I would suggest, perhaps after the meeting. And he
I have another question, too, is that my neighbors are Karen and Kim, that's what I call them. And I've been here for going on nine nine years. Now that me and her don't socialize or speak, or whatever, due to the fact that she, you know, they got in the PPO against me for no reason. But she got a hold of my landlord. Now my landlord don't want to renew his my lease. And he's a slumber. And then the reason why he said he's not renewing my lease is because he says he's selling his property.
Well, I suggest, Mr. Moore, that you contact Commissioner Hodge after the meeting. And and I suspect that he's going to direct you to other offices, that that he's not really the person to ask. But he'll certainly know kind of more about the different levels of government and be able to give you some advice. Is that a fair thing to suggest, Commissioner Hodge?
It's a fair thing to suggest. I mean, my quick answer to this right now would be, one, perhaps the dispute resolution center could be helpful with any of like the neighbor situations, interpersonal challenges with the neighbor. I mean, that's one reason why we do have dispute resolution center. And then for the other piece, if the landlord is selling the property, as I just talked about a moment ago, really, you know, in favor of people being able to purchase their own home and build wealth of that way. So perhaps Legal Aid of Southeast Michigan could be a support there and working through that. And then there are a plenty of first time homeowner programs that we could possibly look into, too.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate you raising those questions. Mr. Mr. Knox, I'm going to unmute you. Tom Knox.
Hello. Thank you for that. Thank you, Commissioner Hodge, for being here. I wanted to go back to what you were saying about housing. And you mentioned an important point that zoning is done at the municipality level. I'm just curious, have you noticed any trends or changes in the way municipalities within the county have approached this? Are there any like bright spots or things that people have been doing that are, you know, encouraging mixed use, changing density rules and things like that? And the second question would
Oh, no, you muted yourself.
Sir, Tommy, are you still unmuted? You should be you should still be unmuted.
No, he's muted.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that, folks. Thank you. The second question was, if not, like, is there something that you suggest a citizen could do in their own township or city or village? You know, how would you go about making good change?
Yeah, those are great questions. So the how the Washington County Commissioned a housing study back in, I believe, 2015, that would take a look at what do we need to do to combat the affordable housing crisis? If you mind, this is several seven years ago now. And the outlook, if we continue on our current trajectory, isn't great. And there haven't been, I think, substantial enough changes. So a lot of I would invite you to take a look at that study if you haven't already seen it, because it does have an outline of some of the things that municipalities can do. And so that is what I would also recommend is encourage your township or encourage township and city officials to be supportive of zoning that would allow mixed use sorts of developments. For example, I this is like a further along in the future kind of dream of mine, would be for the county to be able to acquire the Gulf Village Shopping Center area, redevelop that, and have that turn into a mixed use area where we could have housing and businesses. Because given the, you know, needs for density, that's the direction I really see us moving in. But, you know, townships and cities are going to have to change their zoning to allow that.
Well, thank you very much. I think we have. What can I say? That is the problem. And my limited interactions with zoning boards and things is that, you know, it's it's there's a lot of inertia. So it's difficult there. And then, of course, say, at the city council level, to actually change ordinances. But but I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
But I would also say, I mean, I would encourage you to apply to be appointed to zoning board when when there is an opening, and, you know, gather together a group of residents. I mean, that the whole point about having, in my view, government should be really responsive to the people. And if it's not being responsive, then you need to make your voice heard. So this is an issue that I know is very important to a lot of people, and getting a group together to constantly provide public comment and provide information in a public fashion to elected officials that seem resistant to that kind of thing, that kind of pressure does work.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And when it doesn't work, you know, that's why we have elections.
Noted.
Nals, now, I see Sam has again raised hand with a question, but Leah Mills Chapman has not yet posed a question. And so I'm going to call on her. Or maybe it's Leah.
It's Leah. Thank you so much, Eli. So Justin, I wanted to ask the question, as you kind of touched briefly on the issues that we're having on the eastern side of town, specifically West Willow. What are your thoughts as far as allocation of funding for a specific area to be able to build up community centers, have other nonprofit organizations that are central to that particular area, to work with the youth and the family systems there? I think a lot of times, we have other entities that's coming into our communities that may not necessarily have the rapport and the relationship with the citizens of that area. And I think that we're kind of missing out on some very valuable opportunities right now, while things are pretty hot, for a lack of better words. But right now, I think that we could be taking advantage of an opportunity with ARPA funding, other funding sources or pots of money that could be utilized to help this particular area. So I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would I'm strongly in favor of us supporting and building up more community centers, specifically in neighborhoods across the county. When I think about West Willow, Sugarbrook, Gulf Village, those areas, and other neighborhoods in the county and in Ypsilanti Township, I think it's fantastic. And I'm really excited that we're moving forward on the East Side Rec Center. But that alone is not going to solve many of these problems. We need really local community centers, too. So that's a model I'm strongly in favor of. And I expect that we're going to be able to continue having like moving those conversations forward, because I've talked to other commissioners about that as well.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Did I answer the whole question?
Well, I mean, you did. I guess my thought was is trying to find out what position you had as far as centers that are central to the particular neighborhood that we know is in grave need right now, before things just get completely out of control. I think we're on the brink. But before things get completely out of control, I think that this is a prime time that maybe some real push is going in that area of not just having the global or, you know, overarching conversation of 48197, 48198, but central to the, as I see now, historic West Willow area.
Yeah. So I'll answer the question more thoroughly. I understand what you mean. So look, I understand what you're saying. I live in Sugarbrook. And, you know, in the last month or so, we've had multiple fatal shootings between the Sugarbrook area and the West Willow area. And I live on Andrea Street, just for context, if you want to know the geography over there. So frequently, I mean, some lots of the shootings occur on my street or at the park that's on my street. So when I think about what can we do to invest in those neighborhoods to interrupt gun violence, you know, I mean, that's something that really keeps me up at night and thinking about that. We have a lot of kids in both of those neighborhoods. We know that about 85% of the shootings that take place in Washtenaw County are retaliatory in nature. We know that a large number of the shootings are kids that are acquiring guns from unlocked cars and shooting at each other. So when we have these kinds of shootings, I worry about, is it a kid? Like, is it maybe it's a kid that I know in my neighborhood? So I think these conversations are moving forward. Not everything, you know, is visible because some of the stuff, if it makes the agenda at a Board of Commissioners meeting, we're basically finishing it up. But we are looking at building out a community center, for example, on in the Sugarbrook area, that's between Sugarbrook and Gulf Village. And I haven't had any specific conversations about building one out in West Willow, if you know of a location, or a group that's interested in building that out, we should have another conversation about that. Because I think what it's going to take for us to be able to really provide opportunities and activities for kids after school, or to help divert people from other activities, is being able to make something available. School District, for example, has a lot of vacant properties, some of those we've looked at to build out in the community centers, and we can continue doing that. But you can count on me to be supportive of that, because I, you know, I live in the community, and I know that this is a serious challenge for us.
Definitely. Thank you so much, Commissioner Hodge. I will follow up with you later. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that question. I'm going to call on Sam. See if I can unmute you. So Sam, I believe you can speak now.
Hello?
Yes.
Great. I have a two part question. It was just something I'm thinking about. The first the first part of it is, well, I just looked at the Census Act, and there's about 157,000 housing units in the county. And does anyone know what percentage of those are either classified as manufactured homes or trailers? And as many people have cited, a housing crisis in our county, this is instead of all the other things we need to do, this would be on top of. I know one obstacle for those sorts of developments are zoning. It sounds like the county could purchase land, zone it as it saw fit, and then have some sort of land bank or limited equity arrangement where the people couldn't have their lot rents raised. Because I've been reading across the country in various news media, that it's one of the more affordable options for a lot of people in some areas, until people's lot rent goes up. But if the county were involved, and there was some sort of plan, their lot rent could not raise, and it could be converted into a co op at some point, when the county exited, and then the zoning couldn't go back, I'm just, I'm kind of rambling, but I think you might get the gist of my question.
I get the gist of your question. I'm going to answer it. If I forget a piece of it, let me know. And I want to preface my answer also as like a follow up to Leah's at that. We've got a lot of ideas and things that the county can do. The county cannot do all of this, though. Many of these problems that we're talking about are really significant systemic challenges that government can solve them. But it's going to take local government, like cities and townships, working alongside county government to do it. So I mean, the county itself doesn't have the resources to handle all of the problems. So we really need to make sure that we have good, you know, cooperation from the local governments, because we there are residents, too, like they're the county's residents, but they're also the residents of the city and township. To get to Sam's, the other part of your question, I wish I could tell you that statistic off the top of my head. I can't, but certainly something I can look into and get that information to you. We recently released a housing dashboard that you might be interested in, that shows where the affordable housing units are across the county. And also, you could use that to figure out where do we need to put some more affordable housing. To your other part about what I mentioned with if the county owns a property, it's not subject to local zoning. So it's not subject to local zoning. It doesn't mean we can change the zoning. So it's not like doing that is not going to be a permit solution, because it's, I mean, township is not going to be very or city is not going to be very happy with the county government, county government purchase a bunch of their property, and then uses it and totally zones it in way or uses it for zone things it's not zoned for in the area around that. I think in extreme circumstances, we could consider doing that. But we can't just use that as a like as the solution for everything. I like what you're thinking here around building on what I mentioned earlier with the community land trust idea. When I campaigned for this the first time, I talked a lot about community land trust, and then potentially starting a county land bank to support that work. I looked into that as soon as I got into office and had conversations with the with administration and the county treasurer about that. There isn't a need for the county to create a county land bank to do the work that we would need to do to support community land trusts or similar sorts of projects. The infrastructure already exists within how we have staffing and within the county to do that, which is great, because it's one less administrative hurdle to that we don't have to overcome, and it's less administrative cost that we have to pay. So we can move forward with a lot of what we talked about without creating a county land bank. What else? Oh, I've also I'm in early conversations to pursue what it might look like to have tiny home developments across the county, that I think could also be a solution to some of what we're looking at here, and as a way to help people build wealth by purchasing a home, as a like a home is people's largest asset generally. And tiny homes might be another way for us to go about combating the, you know, affordable housing crisis. That's early conversations on that, though. Did I answer everything you asked?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodge. But we only have a few minutes left. Commissioner Hodge actually has to teach a class in about half an hour. But I'd just like to ask if any of the other attendees has a question. I'd like to ask one or two more. I'll be brief, and then give Commissioner Hodge a chance to say a few final words, and we'll wrap it up. So I'd like to ask, what measures you think the Board of Commissioners should take to monitor the quality of performance when it gives out a lot of money, I guess, the next couple of months to organizations that will help remedy the effects of the pandemic, so under the federal funds that the Board of Commissioners has received? So this is this is something that's that's beyond the usual activities. So perhaps the structure isn't exactly in place. And I'm just wondering, how you think the Board of Commissioners should approach that challenge?
Right. So thinking about the use of American Rescue Plan dollars, we are obligated to do program evaluation. Right. So uh, thinking about the use of American Rescue Plan dollars, we are obligated to do program evaluation of uh what we've, what programs we fund um with those dollars. And so that's going to happen. We're, we're talking about what that's going to look like. Um, and if I'm remembering correctly, that kind of program evaluation for the American Rescue Plan specific programming is going to come out of our racial equity office. Uh, but my bigger vision for this is I want us to have program evaluators that are evaluating programming within the county, so our own internal programs. For example, coming out of the Health Department, Office of Community Economic Development, Community Mental Health. But I also want to have staff that do external program evaluation, so for programs, for nonprofits that we fund. Um, so I, I'm looking at this program evaluation that we're going to be doing for the ARPA-specific projects as really a, you know, a pilot or a test case for us to look at, how do we go about investing in doing program evaluation uh for the internal and external county programming? Because if we, you know, we want certain outcomes, but if we don't have the data that demonstrates what we're spending our money on uh is getting us closer to those outcomes, we have to do something different. A lot of these problems that we're talking about have been around for generations. Clearly, something isn't being done right. And part of that is we, you know, don't have data on everything, and we're serious about making data-driven decisions. We just need more data on that, and that's why I think it's going to be really important for us to invest in program evaluation.
Thank you. I'd like to ask one, one final question. That concerns the relationship between the Washington County Sheriff's Office and those jurisdictions in Washington County that rely on the sheriff to provide police protection. So I I understand that um especially Ipsilanti Township is is a major purchaser of of services of the sheriff's office and that not um I guess that there are, there are tensions sometimes, there are issues between um Ipsilanti Township and the sheriff's office about what services should be provided, how much they should cost. And I'm just wondering if you have any, if you could enlighten us on on, I guess, the nature of these challenges and and your views about how they might be resolved.
Yep. So Ipsilanti Township is the largest user of the sheriff's uh services. So many municipalities in the county contract with the sheriff's office to provide policing services. Um, the cost of that is largely related to police services contracts, and the, we're going to be entering a round of renegotiations for police services contracts at the end of this year. So we can't totally answer your question. I'll try to answer it more if I didn't get to it, but basically, we're going to be evaluating those costs and looking at the contracts this year.
Okay, thank you. Um. I I imagine it's a complex question.
It's a complex question. I mean, I certainly would like for us to, oh, I can add on to it. So part of this, too, is the county has historically subsidized the um policing for municipalities, including Ipsilanti Township. Uh, and I, we're going to be taking a serious look at that uh as we go through the contract negotiation process.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to give members of the audience one last chance to ask a question. And seeing no hands, I see Sam. So Sam, um, you, you, you can ask the last question in this program.
Yeah, I'm just following up. I was looking for that dashboard on the OSAD site, and I was not able to find it. Could you help me with that?
I will try to rule it right now. Uh, let's see.
Thanks.
If I can't find it while we're in the forum, I can, we can follow up. Could you e- either email me or?
I'll, I'll, I'll send you a follow-up email shortly. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Then, Commissioner Hodge, you have a minute or two. How much, however, however much you want to take for a closing statement.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming to the, and coming to the forum. Uh, we're really like a listening session with me. Uh, you know, I think that it's especially important right now as we're overcoming the pandemic and facing a wide variety of other crises that we have strong and consistent leadership on the Board of Commissioners. Uh, and someone that has the courage to fight for the resources that we need, and someone that can work effectively with the other commissioners. You know, county government is unique in many ways because we represent different parts of the county, where we all have to have a county-wide approach, and we have to work together to make things happen. Uh, and we need somebody that has a vision for the future. I've been really successful at working with the other commissioners. Uh, it's why I have the support of seven other commissioners, and it's why we've been able to make many of the transformative changes we've done so far that when we think about, for example, the Children's Savings Accounts Program that I championed, where we're going to start enrolling all kids in Washington County Public Schools and the savings account program for college, trade school, or other post-secondary education. And we designed it in a way uh with equity at the core. So if a family gets free reduced lunch, they're going to get a five hundred dollar seed to those accounts. We did that to target areas most in need, and that happened through the cooperation of the Board of Commissioners and my ability to work with other people. Um, you know, I have a clear vision that hopefully I was able to articulate during our discussion today. Uh, and there are a lot of other challenges that, you know, that we're facing, including food insecurity. We've talked about gun violence to some extent. And I've got a number of strategies that I've been working on, and I, you know, it'd be my honor to be able to continue serving the community in this role, be able to continue the work that I've been doing and continue moving us forward in a, in a future-focused direction for Washington County. So thank you all for coming. Uh, please feel free to follow up with me. And, you know, I'm asking for everyone's vote on it before August second. I believe everybody uh in Ipsilanti Township and Augusta Township that wants their absentee ballot has it. Uh, if you haven't requested it, you can get it, and you'll get it pretty quickly. Uh, or I'll see people at the polls on August second.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hodge, for taking time out of your schedule to speak with us and for giving us this tutorial in county government. And I thank the attendees for coming as well. Take care. Bye-bye.